Jim, I just sent Dave the number again.
I figured out how to do my video.
Ron, Ron, send Dave the one line thing you send that he just taps and gets in. Okay, it's coming. Yeah, sorry. Brian said he was gonna be 10 minutes late. Dave's just getting, Dave's gonna get tapped in here in just a second.
Okay, send him the invitation again, should get it in a minute.
Yes, we're waiting for Dave to get tuned in here. That sounded like Dave.
Yeah, I just, I tried to send it through GoToMeeting to his email address and I just texted an image of this. You know, if he has to call in again tonight because they can't figure it out, I just send the phone number with the access code. So that, that's a text message. I tried to email him through the meeting software, but I don't know if it's gonna work. If he hasn't found it yet.
Somebody got a lot of feedback there.
Yeah.
Two color three.
That's Richard. I heard David say hello, I think.
Yeah, you did. How come I can't get on, Ron?
I'm not sure. It's the same as last time, so there's no new, no new numbers, but not sure.
Can you resend me the app?
I tried to send it from the software. And if it didn't get to you right now, I don't know why, but I'll stay on the phone for a minute, I'll try again.
Well, and Dave, check, I just sent you the, a link, see if that one works.
No, I didn't get no message on my tablet, so.
Did you check your, yeah. Uh, yeah, I should have went to your tablet to your Dave G, or David G.
Yeah, no, nothing. Now I can listen on the phone, that's no big deal.
Okay, well, let's see, so we got, Brian, Brian will join us, I guess, probably whenever he gets home. We've got Roger, you're still there?
Yeah, I'm still here, a lot of noise.
Yeah, there is a lot of noise, folks, if, if you can, if you're not talking, if you put yourself on mute, that helps.
Okay, so Brian's here now?
Yep.
Dave, Dave, can you hear me?
Yep.
Dave, check your phone, I just sent it to your phone.
On the phone, it's gotta be on my tablet, Rowley.
But you can lock, you can put it into your tablet.
As you can all see, we are a highly technological crew.
That's what I did, I put that from my phone into here last two times and it's worked, so.
All right. Now wait a minute, David, Rowley can do it, come on, you can do it.
I don't know.
Sometimes, sometimes, you know, you make a mistake and everything turns out good.
Yes.
Okay, so I can go over who's here if you wanna.
Okay, why don't you go over who's here and we'll, while I start, six, 10, we'll call the, we'll call the informational meeting to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so, public informational hearing with the select board, the alternate to the floor discussions that normally would happen on Tuesday for town meeting day. Brian, Shaq, it needs to mute. Brian, can you mute when you're, you're picking up a lot of feedback on that? Thank you. Now you're good. What's that?
No, I'm unmuted.
Now you're good, thanks. So, in attendance, we've got the full select board, Elizabeth Ben, Jim Noyes, Liz Courtney, Marie Nazaro, Richard Grogan, and myself, Ron Rogensky, town administrator. And that's it.
Okay, let me say, we're all, we're all work on muting ourselves and then remembering to unmute ourselves when we wanna say something. I'm glad to have folks join us. The agenda is really, we just, we, we go through the, the warning. And, and if we, we have some time, there are a couple of other things that I thought I'd take advantage of and we can talk about. Happy to have everybody that's with us stay put while we, while we talk about it. The, the first article is a, is a list of, of all the folks that are voted, are gonna be voted by Australian ballot. We've got the select board members, we've got listers, the school district, cemetery commission, library trustees. I'm, I'm noticed having, having voted early, there are a lot of empty slates there. We'll see what happens. People wanna be careful with empty slates, somebody could, you know, somebody could get you by doing a write-in campaign for somebody. So I guess the first one is Article 2, "Will voters appropriate $2,000 to the North Central Vermont Recovery Center." And, and, and for a little, these, the, the organizations that we give to every year, everyone came in and is just level funding. So, we have, and we started last year, when folks just level fund, we just, we just leave it. So we didn't feel there's, that their, their, if you will, their base appropriation is built right into our budget. These are three new requests, so if we're at a regular town meeting, these are folks that would stand up on, on the floor and ask to be added into the budget. So do we have anyone from the North Central Vermont Recovery Center? Not, not hearing anybody. These are, you know, they're located over in Morrisville. They do lots of work with folks that are having substance use issues. They've been, they're part of a statewide network that has been around for some time. They do a lot of mentoring and peer support work with folks. It has proven over the years, not just in Vermont, but in a variety of places, to be, to be very successful programs. And as I think we all know, substance use issues, and this includes alcohol as well, is on the increase. This year of lockdown for people has increased people's stress and consequently, a lot more folks misusing substances, trying to find a little comfort in life. So the need has been, has been growing, just as, as we see and hear that the demand for mental health counseling is growing tremendously. I don't, anybody on the boards, the board heard me say this last year, I don't know, anybody have any questions or wanna add anything? Okay, we're good. Article 3 is, "Will the voters appropriate $750 to Salvation Farms." We have somebody, right, Ron? No?
Yeah, I'm not sure if anybody's speaking, we just open it up and see if anybody wants to jump in.
How did we use this much silverware already?
What? Was that at Salvation Farms? That sounded sort of more like, that sounded like a church basement kind of a thing.
I don't know, there's a couple of callers that are not muted, so they're.
We're learning that they've used a lot of silverware, okay. As long as they're stealing grandma's, we're okay. Last, last week Salvation Farms had someone talking about, you know, their programs and, and what they do, the amount of, of gleaned food that they save and goes out to the things, programs like Meals on Wheels. They have helped distribute fresh produce through doctors' offices to get good foods to folks that are, that are really feeling the pinch. They've done, again, as we know, particularly this year, the, the number of, of families that are really struggling with with, with enough food, never mind putting good food on their table, is, has, has grown tremendously. They have, one of the questions Dave asked, asked last week, and it's good, they don't, they don't work with the schools unless they do some educational programs, because they are very careful to not interfere with anything, any programs that, that farmers are selling directly to. So they are very aware, and if anything, part of their long-term goal is to help farmers find more markets for their products. Okay, anybody wanna add anything? Alrighty, Article 4, "Will the voters appropriate $500 to the Vermont Family Network." Let's see, we learned last week that this group, once it jogged my memory, I went, oh yeah. They work with schools and they work with families for, with kids with special needs. Helping the family get access to, to the support services that they, that they need for helping deal with, again, with children that have special needs. Five, oh, that's exactly what it says, is it? Article 5, "Will the voters approve in addition to any other appropriations." In other words, if we accept, if the other articles are, are supported. It is so strange to be doing town meeting like this. Okay, if they're aware, whatever. The, the budget would be $2,736,000, of which $2,308,200 would be raised by property taxes. I can't remember, Ron, if we approved the, if voters approved the three up above. What does it add?
Yeah, if every, I got the number here, if everything was approved, right, it was 4.2% tax rate increase with a, I think it's 3.4% budget increase. Something, it's something like that, so it was, and 1% of that was the new water rates, because you, the select board always tries to get close to 3% tax rate increase. So with the water rates, it went from the three to, three to four, basically, on the tax bill. Three to 4%.
Yeah, everybody, including all the, all the groups that, you know, that generally get, get money from towns, everybody was very conscious of what a difficult year it has been for, for, for folks. So trying to stay between the 2 and 3%. I see our, our school budgets did a really good job of that, too. So, um, again, that's the, that's the, that's the question, if, Ron, shall we go ahead and go through and then go back and, and talk with Dick?
Yeah, well, you're following the agenda, I think, if you wanna bring, if you wanna talk to Dick now, you're, you're in the right part of the agenda. The only, Agenda 6 is pretty quick, it's the tax rate, but I think just from order, order perspective, stay here in number 5.
Okay. Bring, bring something a, a little new. We have, you know, is for the, for the town and the road crew, which I expect is the same in every community, but it certainly is difficult for small towns as, one, the state puts more and more regulation on communities and on roads and things that we have to do. But being with a small crew, we end up in the summertime with people taking their time off, so a small crew becomes an even smaller crew. And in conversations with, with Mark, we're sort of watching the things and, and just watching him through the, through the building season, a lot of his time is taken up having to go inspect projects that are being done. I think here coming up, there's, you know, there's the finishing of the, of the village water project. There's the center road, the big paving thing that's going on out there. And, and some time ago, I thought, you know, what would be, what would be great is if Mark could be allowed to actually put more time and work. And I thought a couple of years ago was if we could find like a retired engineer or somebody who wanted to put in a little bit of time in the building season, who would have experience in the background to go do these sorts of checks and, and work with Mark. But that would free up Mark's time to be able to do more on the, on the, literally, on the, on the work projects with the guys. And so when, when we have somebody on vacation, instead of having a two-person crew, we could actually still have a three-person crew. And, and, and Ron was aware that, that Dick had this kind of experience and was maybe interested, so we just started some very informal conversations about, this might be an interesting, I'd say is a pilot project to, to assist our road crew in all the work that has to be done, to see if we couldn't have our, make everything get done a little better, a little frus, a little less frustration on some people as well. Ron, you think that's a pretty good overview and then we'll?
Yeah, I think the other, the other piece that comes up is the funding part of it. So every year, there's always inspections to be done or work to be, sort of, work items to be defined, if you will. Neighbors to be met with, you know, stuff that takes some real time out in the field, but also with somebody that has the technical experience to push those through relatively quickly. So there's some expert advice, if you will, in the, in the planning part. And there's also some long-term planning that we're, we are needing to do, which is also looking at road and bridge and culvert networks, so that we can understand those costs better and bring those recommendations to the board for the budget season. So for example, when Roger Berry was around, we started working on a paving plan, capital paving plan for 20 or 25-year cycle. Then we got down to the inventory and then we got into, you know, pretty, pretty close to coming up with some ballpark numbers, but we didn't quite finish it enough to be able to tell the select board if the $245,000 a year, which is where your paving budget is this year, proposed, for July 15. for July 1st, if that's a good number, or are we $50,000 short? So those are kind of, it's, it's big and small, I guess is my perspective. It's the, it's the details of having somebody able to bring some, not necessarily mediation or negotiation skills, but just able to assess something pretty quickly and talk to Mark and make a recommendation and get something done. You know, service to the public when they need it. I know Brian has a, a neighbor on his road and, I don't, you know, it's, I think Mark went out there two or three times trying to understand what that was, whether it was a drainage problem or whether it was, uh, the road got shifted. And I think each time he had to go meet up there, he's, he's taken away from his crew time. And like Susan said, if you take away one person from a three-person crew and the fourth person's upgrading the road, you, you end up maybe having to stop a job or delay a job or reschedule a job and all that stuff. The pilot part is, is the more interesting part because we haven't had somebody look at that whole piece. But the way we've done the past, you'd have a depot street sewer line being cut across the road. And us being the town, not necessarily directly involved, but the village had to cut the road. The village hired somebody to inspect it. Uh, for their perspective, their, their contractor had to do the inspections. But the town, we went and hired Summit Engineering to make sure it was done the right way so that road could be put back together and not create a problem, even though it wasn't a town project, it was a village project that was damaging the town road. And, you know, I think Summit Engineering spent three quarters of a day out there just kind of watching the contractor, making sure the fittings are right, the compaction was back, you know, the way it's supposed to be, uh, before the road was paved. And they actually did a pretty good job in the end. But we've also seen some bad jobs where nobody was on site to watch the contractor and we have to go back out and tell them to redo it again. And that, that's, that's the tough stuff that Mark gets really upset with because now he doesn't have to look at one project, now he just has to go look at a repair project and make sure the second project is good. So I think there's, there's all sorts of things that we want to take notes on, uh, if this pilot project can be done. And then next fall, in October, uh, we would get a report on how it went and if it's a good thing to continue and whether or not we should, make it a, make it a systems, you know, permanent systems fix or a component. Uh, somebody report to the select board, uh, on major projects, somebody to help Mark when Mark needs help. Uh, and then of course with the select board planning over the winter, uh, we just, you know, we've been talking about paving streets, but those are almost, the must-dos. We, we don't have a paving plan for next year, you know, for example. And some of that stuff just takes time to, to put together. Uh, we've also started doing the culvert upgrade first before paving. And that's, uh, V-Trans does that now a lot. I think Mooresville does that now. And if you try to do the road once, you don't do three out of 20 culverts. You know, you, you might want to do, you might end up doing some early, but at least you inspect everything to know that those are good culverts to last the 12 to 15 years that pavement's supposed to last. And I, you know, it's, I, I think I want to, I see this as a way to bring, bring that piece of planning as well as inspection together a little bit and, and have some efficiencies. Uh, whether it's budgetary efficiencies, Mark's time and just plain just advice, you know, uh, don't do it this way, you guys are, I know you've been doing it like this for 15 years, but you should stop doing it that way and here's a new way and be open to those discussions.
Well, I, I also think what happens a lot of times, um, it probably happens in big communities as well. Um, but you know, it just gets, it, it gets so busy that the time to plan, the time to, to draft things out properly just vanishes. Um, and again, that's where I think, I think it would be, I think it would be helpful. Well, Dick, now that we've tramped all over the place, how have we done?
Myself?
How did we describe you?
Well, I, I worked with the Public Works Department in Stowe for nine years. I was with Percy's for 15 years, project management level stuff. Uh, I certainly understand where everybody's coming from as far as the need to have some oversight. Like Ron mentioned, all the new, uh, burden that the state is putting on small towns, uh, stormwater. Stormwater work is just huge and I, I don't understand how anybody can keep up with that personally. Public Works in Stowe, we ended up with, uh, three people in the office. Our Public Works Director, myself, and we actually hired another, uh, in my, in my time there, we hired another young man, Town Engineer to help out our Public Works Director. So it just, there's so much going on all the time. Renovations of sidewalks and streets and underground utilities and it's not, it's not getting any easier. So I agree with what Susan said at the beginning about small towns are really starting to feel this. And, you know, what, what's a good answer, good economical, but also, uh, strategic answer to it and may, maybe we're, what we've been talking about briefly, maybe that's a good solution for a small town is to have somebody, uh, part-time oversight, opinions like Ron said, or, uh, anything like that. So I think it's a good idea. I mean, from a, from a taxpayer's perspective and trying to make the highway department crews more efficient, seems like it's a good idea. Pilot program.
Yeah, I think, I think in a year we'd, we'd all, we'd all learn a lot. You could go, well, this was a really bad idea. Or you may start, you have a whole consulting business that you end up with 15 people working for you up in small towns, who knows, right? The other, I'm sure other board members have some thoughts or questions and as they say, we don't, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but my, my goal would be, I thought, since we had this time set aside, it would be a good time to talk about it and then on our regular meeting on the 15th, we can, we can, we can decide what we want to do and how much money we want to allocate towards it and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, and just so the rest of the board members that's listening, Roger, and all that stuff. Sue and I had a brief conversation on this this afternoon and, uh, this ain't a cheap hourly thing. What'd you say, what, $50 an hour you're going to charge it down?
Yeah.
And, and how many hours you figure that you would spend a week, Richard?
I don't have the answer for that.
Yeah, that, that's all the stuff that we have to sort out, Dick.
Yeah, we're going to make a budget. Because what I'm saying, what I'm thinking and the only way I'm thinking, I'm not saying one thing about your credentials, Richard, not one thing a bit. All I'm looking at is the taxpayer's pocketbook.
Understood, and I'm a, I'm a taxpayer, so I understand that.
Now, if our argument is we're taking Mark off the, the, the town stuff to answer these questions and stuff and we're paying Mark, uh, $22 an hour and we're paying you $50 an hour. And, and we hire a part-time guy in the summer for $17,000. You know, for another $15,000, we can get another fine employee, which would leave Mark from doing this work. Just, just an avenue to go, guys. I'm not saying right or wrong, just throwing that out.
Well, but this isn't the kind of work that we're gonna, we're going to hire a crew member for. Again, that's, you know, this is the, this is the more planning, strategic, overseeing it and, and again, part of my thought is, is if this works and Mark can do more direct work, because we periodically have, do we need a fifth person, do we need a fifth person? I think this could be a way of addressing, no, we don't need a fifth person if this works the way I hope it works. Because, because it lets Mark drop back into that, doing a lot of, um, physical work as opposed to planning in, you know, checking work.
But don't, don't just take some of the work off your plate, Ron?
Part of the, part of what we're trying to juggle is the, the issue we have with these inspections. So I'm not, I'm not qualified to go out and talk to a contractor about how they're exactly supposed to do something. I have the general idea and I can throw back at somebody. But a lot of the, a lot of the adjustments that Mark French could do or somebody that's an engineer, they'll be able to know that if you adjust it this way, it's going to work. If you adjust it that way, it's not going to work. And that's nothing I've ever, I've ever done in my job. So what, what we do instead is we hire somebody out like an engineer or a consultant to come out and help and those are, you know, $90 to $125 an hour. So we'd be saving that exercise on those inspections.
How much? How, how many dollars did we spend last year on consultants?
Oh, we're probably close to, yeah, I don't, well, that's a hard question because we hire consultants, all sorts of work. So we've paid, we've paid Summit Engineering, Watershed Consulting, uh, Matt Reed did some work for us. There's consultants that only can do work that they're going to stamp and then there's, there's consultants that will come and give us advisory inspections. They're not going to stamp it because they didn't design it. So I don't expect that Dick will be designing anything as much as reviewing it and coming up with solutions and then looking at long-term plans. So right now we don't pay anybody to work on the long-term, uh, big picture plans. That's one of the problems that we've had. There's just, there's not enough time to sit down and work it up, look at all the roads, get up a nice road plan together. We've tried it a couple of times, but we just, other things get pushed around and nobody's there to focus on. So, you know, give you a quick example, I don't, I don't, I guess to answer your real question, Dave, I don't, I don't think we're going to spend, I'd be surprised if we spent more than $5,000 in the summer on sort of the running around for the construction inspection and helping us get ready for next year. I don't, I don't see that being a big first year, big blowout special, you know, that you might think. This is really a pilot project. On the 15th, we could talk to, you know, about the parameters for what the, what the budget could be. Tell Dick that that's the budget we got for this pilot project and, and let's come up with a better program or, or back off the whole thing and just say, we don't need it. As far as, you know, the, the other, the other angle I think is Mark French will still go out and meet with neighbors and landowners that are having road problems. I think he's, he's got to go that first time. And then if he has an issue that he can't resolve, then he might want to call Dick in to have, you know, scratch their heads together and try to come up with a resolution. But Mark French was pretty adamant that he still wants to be the first one called on road problems. And I think that's, that's nothing that we put Dick in the middle of because probably 90% of the time, Mark is going to, Mark and the crew are going to have a solution to that. So that's nothing that, that's nothing that we'd have Dick doing.
Sorry. It would probably be an awkward position to be in as a private, you know, consultant to be, uh, directing townspeople, you know, where and how to put a culvert in, things like that. You start to get into plenty of liability.
Yeah, yeah. So like right now, if we're reviewing a highway access permit, uh, generally what happens is there's a, Mark and Brian will go out and look at the application. If there's nothing significant there, we'll issue the permit. If it's a difficult situation, then we, we have hired people to come to help with a, let's say an inspection type phase. So, we may have an applicant, submit a plan, we look at it, it makes sense. But it's just that difficult where we'll put a condition on the permit that it's inspected by the landowner or if it's not that bad, Mark, Mark French or Dick, or somebody could go out and look at it to make sure it's okay. I've done them myself, but very, very infrequent. Usually, usually it's Mark French going out there to make sure, he's the one that has to sign off on it. But if you, if he runs into a problem, that's where, you know, we can hire a consultant or Dick, depending on the need. I, I don't know if Dick, I don't know if Dick's going to take elevations, for example. I think that's something that we may still have to hire somebody out to do that kind of work.
I've got a question. Dick, can you tell us a little bit more about your educational background?
Years ago, I'm actually an electronic technician by education. I went to a technical school down in Waltzam, Massachusetts. So that's what I started off in. I'm a computer technician, hardware technician. Got into the excavation business back in the early eighties. And that's where I've been ever since. I came to Dale Percy Incorporated down in Stowe in 1997. I was hired as a project manager. And the time I was there, Dale Percy, exponential growth. It was a good time for a lot of companies like that. My education is at Dale Percy Incorporated, quite a bit of it. And municipal education is at the town of Stowe.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, just wondering, uh, one thing we're going to have to do first, and I know that it's happened in the past, is we'll have to develop some sort of a job description. Otherwise, certain things go to the wayside. And, um, we'd have to check the funding. Like you said, we'll have to set a budget of some sort so we can afford it. So those are my, uh, my concerns in the sense, uh, if you can call them that. But I think you'll be, you'd be a great asset to, uh, the town and you living in the town is another asset.
And I, I think too, again, Ron, it's all still fairly superficial here. But with a variety of grants and programs that we have already is probably where we can, we can pull money to pay for him. So as opposed to it being, if you will, it's additional spending, we can pull it out of, you know, like the, the giant sinkhole project that goes on forever. Like last year, as Ron was saying, have to hire some engineer and those folks to come out and do things for us. Be a lot easier to have Dick involved with it and keeping an eye on it and keep up an hour instead of $140 an hour. Roger, you got any questions right now?
No, everybody's asked what I was, you know, has asked all the questions I could think of and, um, sounds pretty good to me. As long as we can find the funding for it.
So if there's a project that needs to be signed off on or anything like that, you have the credentials, uh, Richard, to do that?
No, I'm not a P E and I'm not a site technician. No, I'm not a designer. I'm not a designer. I'm, I'm a, a construction manager. I, when I left Percy's in 2011, I, I went on my own, uh, for a year and a half. I worked with, actually Jay Peak. I had been up at Jay Peak with Percy's and, uh, the initial projects up there, the ICE Arena and, we did the hotel. I mean, we did a lot of work up there for quite a few years. Um, when I left Percy's, Jay Peak reached out, reached out to me. Very similar to a situation like that they heard through the grapevine that I'd left and, uh, I ended up overseeing a couple of water projects. Water happens to be my thing. I did a lot of municipal water work over the years. So they hired me to be on the hill, watching two or three different contractors that were doing various utility projects out there. It was pretty much daily reports, photographs, reporting back to the engineers that were, were the designers. So I worked, I worked under, the level under the designers, I worked directly with them. Gave my opinions for whatever that was worth and reported back to them. If there were any major issues, I wasn't the one directing, directing contractors on what to do. I would have to go back to the engineering firm, in this case Trudell Consulting and, uh, another company, I can't remember. They were doing all the stormwater work. But anyway, if I saw a problem or an issue or heard of one, I had to relay that back. So I was the, on the, boots on the ground, they call me, boots on the ground liaison to, between the engineers, the owners and all the contractors that were working up there at the time. So I see this as a similar thing. You're bringing, you had Huck in town, you had Percy's in town this year doing culvert work and, uh, getting ready for next year's paving and, so that's what I see, the need, the need what Ron was describing, running around and... running around and checking on these things and making sure everything's going the way it's supposed to. And if there's any problems, reporting back. And so it's a long-winded way of saying, no, I'm not a designer or a construction manager. My, my experience is roads, water, sewer. Can you tell you how many, uh, you know, sites in both commercial site work and residential site work? When we, when I was with Percy, we did quite a bit. We did it all over northern Vermont, not just in Stowe. I was in, uh, Hilton, I was in JD, blah, 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 so.
So, so Richard, you've got the credentials if, uh, uh, they say this past year when Percy or Hutchins are putting in, uh, the culvert there and, and they weren't compacting it every twelve inches. You've got the credentials, say, okay, stop right there because you're not doing this right?
I've got the, I've got the knowledge to do that. Do I, will, will I have the, uh, the authority, you know, from the town? Again, that, to me, that's kind of a funny area liability-wise, not being an employee of the town. Uh,
Yeah, I think.
You know what I mean, Susan?
Right, yeah. I think that's the kind of situation where if you see something, something isn't being done right, you can call Mark immediately.
Right.
And let him know there's a problem.
Right.
And that's how, and that's how, and I see in some ways, you know, this is a, uh, Richard and Mark will have a very close working relationship. And, uh, but when there's an issue or something needs to be called, it's going to be, Mark is going to be the one who then may call Ron, who may call Ryan and Rowley and say, you know, whoa, wait a minute, what's going on?
Yeah, that's, that's how, that's how I see this. I, I had, uh, I did not have professional liability insurance when I did this back in two thousand and twelve, when I worked for JP. And I, Rich, Rich, uh, Smith, Hickok and Boardman was my agent. And I had to be very careful of how I worded my agreements with whoever I was working with, so that I do not direct, I do not, you know, manage employees' observation and, you know, it's, it's unfortunately, the litigious world that we live in, I, that's a, a fine line.
We have, um, we'll have a, it's kind of a two-part approach here. The first part is to nail down the job description and the money part. The other part is the agreement for services, which it, it is a choice. We can have, and I, and I think it's, just to let everybody know it's a choice. You can have contracted people working for the town or you have an employee. In this case, the specialized services of a, a construction manager are not something that we have in, as a single job. We kind of spread that out. You know, Allison does some financing on the construction job. I do some of the grants. I do some of the oversight. Uh, Mark does some of the field work. So we, we do, I think maybe this is what Dave was talking about. We do kind of spread out this job amongst three or four people, including some of the select board duties when we talk about capital planning, uh, which hopefully we'll get, be able to do a little bit more on. But this is really, think of it as a position that's focused on those things that you want to get done, I guess. I think that's, rather than have three or four people picking at it as things pop up, this person could be, you know, saying, okay, here's what we want to see from you. And through this pilot project, you're, you're, the select board will define that better. So it'll be a little bit loose in the sense that it's first time, you know, the scope, scope of services. But yeah, I think that, that general idea of you seeing something, uh, and being there, let's Mark continue with his work. And then you're the one that would say, yep, they were doing good for three days. But that fourth day, I don't know where that crew came from, but.
Right.
You got to come down here, Mark, and we got to stop this and have a talk, a talk with this crew.
Yep.
That, that's.
That's how I, that's how I see it.
Okay, Rowley? I, I like somebody coming in that's got some stormwater experience because, oh, man.
Always got some stormwater.
We're all, we're all getting hammered in stormwater areas.
Yep.
I, I think, I think we've heard a lot and I think we've heard enough. This sounds like a good thing to me, but I would like a few days to think about it.
Yeah, like I say, I thought this was.
Just to.
Since I, I bet there weren't going to be a whole bunch of things that this would be an opportunity, since we are all together, to be able to, to have Dick talk to us and get some ideas and then be able to think about it. And then on the fifteenth, of course, you know, Brian and Rowley, maybe you, three new people on, on the fifteenth going for it. So who knows, right?
Well, you know, I mean, is there, is there negotiating between a little bit of the money or what? Yep.
With me?
Yeah.
It's the same rate I was charging in two thousand and twelve. So I don't, I don't think it's an outrage. I'm carrying my own insurance and using my own vehicle and, you know, well.
And, and, and that's the only question I got. I agree with Rowley, I think it's a good idea because knowledge is knowledge. But unless I did the math right, which I didn't do this afternoon, but if I did the math right now.
Yep.
Uh, if, if we went with a twenty-hour, a twenty, a week construction period in the summer.
Yeah, twenty weeks, yep, okay.
That, that's five hours a week. If you, if you're going to hold yourself to that five thousand dollar budget, you, you think it can be done in a, in a five hours per week? One hour a day?
What's the job description?
Yeah, that's right. That's why we need some time.
Right, right. Well, well, and, and plus you can end up with, I'm sure, when you, you know, there are going to be times when there isn't a lot that happens.
Oh, yeah.
And other times it'd be really busy. You could have a week and a half where you're not doing much. And then presto, you got fifteen hours. That's, I, that's sort of the way. But it, but again, I think that's sort of all stuff we can start, we can start hammering out and, and figure out for the, for the fifteenth. And Ron can do a little money searching and see what we can come up with. Good. And, and I think now too, Dick, that you've talked to us, you can, um, you know, we can chat back and forth and see if we can refine it a little bit better. And we'll, we'll, we'll bring Mark in the loop and.
Okay.
See how we do.
Okay.
Terrific.
Richard, don't take this, uh, wrong, but, uh, we're just trying to, we're just trying to feel out everything and see what it, this is the first, uh, somewhat of the first time. I know we've talked about hiring somebody, but, uh, first time meeting you and that type of thing and trying to get things clarified. So, uh, please don't take it wrong. And like I said before, I'm sure you'd be an asset to the town.
No, I know, I, you know, do you hire, do you hire a full-time, uh, public works director? Or do you start like this? That's, that's really what it comes down to. And the town of Stowe went through this years ago. I don't know if anybody, Rowley might have known Cliff Johnson. Cliff John, Cliff Johnson.
They got, they got two of them down there now, engineers.
Well, three when they counted me. But, um, Cliff Johnson was a retired engineer.
Yeah.
He was from New Jersey. He came to Stowe and he was hired as a part-time consultant because Stowe was about to go through water and sewer expansion. And he, he was sucked in and became, you know, eighty-hour-a-week job within three months. So.
I'm trying to think of the, the guy's name. I can't think of it right now, up in Sterling that does that.
Sterling.
Yep. He, he's done, he did a lot for Marshall too. We were doing that job by the police station.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, was that, uh, Mike Stafford?
Yep, here, I think it was. He lives up in Sterling up there.
Yeah, he lives up in Sterling. Yeah, Mike Stafford.
Yeah.
Or, okay. Okay.
But it, it sounds good. I just.
Yeah.
All about money. Got to have, got to have some lost man.
That's, that's, that's right. Well, we'll go, we'll go to work on it and sort of come up with a, with a, uh, somebody will come up with some kind of a proposal for the fifteenth, as I say. See what happens tomorrow.
So Susan, there's still, there's still a lot of folks online. If you want to just ask if there's anything more on the budget before you get out of Article Five.
Okay, or, or if people hearing this idea, if they'd like to chime in now. We'd be, be happy again, or budget questions or whatever. Happy to have you join us.
Hi, everyone, it's Liz Courtney. Um, I just have a quick question. Then I wasn't able to attend the last select board meeting, but I know there was the question, um, from the Guyhan Valley Hall Committee about a budget increase that we know didn't make it onto the actual budget this year. And I wondered what the discussion was about that.
Yeah, that's a, I think the select board asked me to work with you and, uh, Al Spitzer, just to figure that out. Uh, basically you need fifteen hundred dollars for Wi-Fi, which is why you had your presentation, I think it was back in October, to go from thirty-five hundred to five thousand. So we have some money in our community, uh, community line. We have a community events line and a community support line in the, uh, select board's, uh, general government budget. And I don't, and other ideas that we can have in the economic development, because you're doing, uh, the Wi-Fi for the public. So that, I think we have to have a conversation about how to do that. Uh, I think, I think you're covering it this current year, right? With your thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
So we, we have a little bit of time to figure it out for July one, but the budget will be set, uh, unless, unless it's voted down tomorrow, the budget would be set with a thirty-five hundred. So we do have to have some conversations about how to fund the Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I mean, our, our concern was just because it is, because our, our maintenance budget is relatively small. And as we start using the building more and we're adding heat, you know, our utility bills are going to go up slightly. Obviously, we'll do a lot more fundraising and events in the future to help offset those costs. But, um, great to know if we just have another way to help fill that gap.
Yep.
Okay, don't need a total solution now. I just wanted to ask if it had gotten discussed.
Hey, Liz, it's Brian Shackett. Um, just wondering how you're coming along on, uh, your plan for the future for the, uh, the, the building itself. Have you got it laid out? What, uh, each step or how are you going to proceed with, uh, or is it really contingent on the funding?
Um, both. So we have a master plan, like how we've sort of put the repairs in order of priority, with our, our main priority being getting the first floor, uh, more equipped for year-round use, which we're making good progress on. We're putting in, uh, heaters and updating the electrical, which was funded with the Vermont Arts Council grant. We just received another grant. We'll be announcing in the next few days, as soon as, um, Preservation Trust of Vermont officially announces it. But fifty grand is to help us redo all of the windows. Um, so that'll especially help the first floor. And then, you know, we'll work our way up and get the, the second floor renovated. But we know that that's going to involve fundraising, grant writing. And, you know, once COVID is behind us, God willing, we'll be able to do more events or we can raise money as well.
Are the, are the walls in there insulated?
I don't believe so. That's on our list of things that we wish to do.
Well, you're going to put heat into it. You want to contain it the best you can. So just a thought.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot. I think the windows will help. We'll get storm windows put in as part of that. But eventually, we'd like to do blown-in insulation to the walls to really get it sealed up for the dead of winter.
Hey Liz, did you guys give up the idea on the, uh, uh, yes, thumbs down, uh, what am I trying to say, guys? The preservation, the, the old buildings where, remember them guys were going for a grant?
Yes, so that's the grant that we've just been awarded.
You went for that grant?
We did go for the grant and it's been awarded. We need to get the select board's approval to officially accept it because part of the contingency is that we go into an arrangement with the Preservation Trust of Vermont that any future work that we do on the building will need to be by historic standards. But the major upside is we get fifty grand that we could redo all of the windows.
Well, that, that's right, David. It was whether they were going to become a historic building or not, discussing the upsides and the downsides. And obviously, the upside is that it opens the door to a lot more money, not, uh, not just the Preservation Trust and unfolks, but a lot of, of federal dollars become available for doing things like insulation. So they, they just.
Yeah. Liz, um, is there a link or something you can send me so I can research that to, uh, see what sort of, uh, contingencies, I guess, are on, uh, accepting that money?
Um, yeah, I think there's probably information on the Preservation Trust website. I can look for that and send it to you. I'll send it through Ron. Um, but we should be getting more information from them directly, I would think, once we get, you know, the paperwork to officially accept the grant.
Liz, that was a nice, that was a nice little newsletter-y thing, catching folks up to speed and everything that you guys have done in the past year. That was well done.
Thank you. Now, we figured we wouldn't be able to talk to people from the floor and tell me.
I know.
What we're up to.
Okay, got anybody else out there that would like to chime in? Come on, Jim Noes, this is your big shot.
Nothing to offer, nothing to ask. Guys are doing a good job.
I got, I got a question, Jim. When do you guys hope to get back to at least limited access into the library?
Um.
And here comes my trick question. So once you're fully vaccinated, can we get passes?
All up in the air. I'm sure we'll be talking about it at our next meeting next Tuesday.
Yeah. Okay, Ron, we hearing anything from anybody else?
Uh, negative.
Okay, um, just, just while we have us all here, I would, uh, Rowley and I met with our new fire chief. And, um, Rowley, I think we had a very good, we had a very good conversation with him.
Yes.
And, uh, the, the variety of questions that we all had were answered, which I won't take up time here, but at the next, next, uh, select board meeting, we can. But it, it was very, it was very productive and, um, my, my sense is that there, there aren't any hard feelings between people. Um, and, uh, they're, they're reaching out to do something for Ed. And, uh, so I think, I think, I think everything is working okay. Anything else we need to do, folks?
Uh, you just have to let people know what Article Six is.
Article Six, oh, okay. Article Six is, I guess, is probably when we're paying the taxes?
Yes, quarterly, quarterly payment.
Yep, speaking of our regular.
Every year, yep.
Quarterly, quarterly payments, um. We're still, um, it's interesting, this being, being a strange day. And we put it, it was in the newspapers and I know the radio was doing coverage and everybody was doing coverage. And last time I talked with Kim, usually on a busy town meeting year, she may get thirty-five requests for absentee ballots. She's had about a hundred and thirty already. So folks are definitely, seem to be paying attention to it, which is, which is good. Okay, and I guess with that, are we done? Anybody got anything else?
Now, we got to go into executive, Brian?
No.
Just the hearing tonight.
Okay, I guess we can adjourn. What, yeah?
Any, any progress on, uh, the meeting with the town group?
Well, we're trying for the eighth, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're going to try Monday, the eighth, uh, in the morning. And after the election, we'll set that up for a time. Just want to make sure we're working with the, the newly elected board to have a, a highway crew meeting.
Okay, anything else? You got anything, Roger?
No.
Roger, you and I aren't counting votes tomorrow night. It's going to be weird.
Count them.
Okay, I guess we can move to adjourn. Okay. I guess we can move to adjourn?
So move.
Okay. Need a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And, uh, Dick, I'll reach out to you.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you.
Everybody have to be careful, be careful out there tonight and tomorrow.
Right. Bye.
Stay warm.